Call the City Council Special Meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Steelgrave?
Here.
Vining?
Here.
Germaney?
Here.
Lomore?
Present.
Felder?
Here.
Whitman?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Present. So, looking at the agenda, Mr. Pastu, there's a couple items and first is executive session.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just, yeah, again requesting council to enter into closed executive session. List a couple on the agenda. I know there's another add-on that we had sent correspondence out for that. So, what we need is a motion to enter in the closed session.
And the two items that are listed are still the, nothing to add to that, sorry?
No, nothing to those two. They're already on the agenda.
Okay. Yes, Councilman?
Make a motion to enter an executive closed session for the purpose of client privilege, attorney-client privilege, correspondence, land acquisition, and a litigation update concerning 1304 East First Street.
Motion by Councilman Lomore, supported by Councilwoman Steelgrave to go into closed executive session for the items stated.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Steelgrave? Yes. Vining?
Yes.
Germaney?
Yes.
Lomore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
We need a motion to go back and, especially in the open. Motion to go back into open session. the county, and for comment before it becomes final and incorporated into the master plan. So that's what those two items are, is to just accept it and then have the planning commission begin the process of adopting it for the city master plan. Matt, Mark, did I miss anything with that?
Any questions from council? I was there on the, they're on the consent agenda, so you're not looking for them to pull?
If you want to pull them, you can, but I, part of the reason for wanting to talk about it before the meeting is just so everybody understood it. You could talk further it, obviously you can pull them and put them on council action if you wanted to, but I thought just a brief explanation would help understand why it's on consent.
Okay, well, see how council does. I don't think so. Okay. Other items, Mr. Pastu?
Any other questions on that?
Brian, do you have a question?
I do.
Not on that, though. Action, the mast arm traffic signals. Do we have any further comment on that regarding, I mean, it looks like we're going to be fully in on this, paying for it. It's the seventh and Telegraph, correct, the shared corridor with Monroe Township.
It's share the, and the cost.
Shared payment to it as well. There is a shared payment to that?
Yes.
Yeah, it would be forty.
Maybe if, Vince, I guess the contact was made with Township and their response, maybe that would be a good time to discuss that.
If you want to, some of this initiated with conversation that Patrick had at a federal urban aid project meeting, wasn't it?
Yep.
Yeah.
That's correct. Honorable Mayor and Council, Patrick Lewis, Director of Engineering and Public Services. Yes, I'm happy to report that I've come back with a 50% share from the other jurisdiction. Yeah, actually, it's kind of nice when you run into some of the elected officials at those other meetings, the federal aid committee. Mr. Baron and I had a conversation. He presented it to his board and he expressed that commitment. I don't know if they're, they're going to get some offset from the road commission or not. They were still talking about that, but they did tell us that they'd be, they would split it with us. So that's why, based on your discussion at the last meeting, my belief was that you would be willing to put in 50% of the cost on that one. So that's why you've got it again for action tonight.
Very good.
Good. Any questions? That's all, that was, yeah, there's the only other question I had regarding what's on the agenda. Something else that's not on the agenda?
Okay.
If I may just finish up with, I had a couple of other items on there. One in particular is item 3901, which is authorization to order 20 self-contained breathing apparatus units for public safety. It's contained in the capital improvements program that you'll look to adopt at the next meeting. Part of the reason it's brought forward is to try and avoid a likely increase in the cost. We did budget, I think, $211,000 for the replacement. This comes in lower by about, oh, about $16,000. So if we, if you approve the order tonight, we get the purchase order in, it's still not going to be delivered till after the fiscal year, and it'll be charged to the following fiscal year after its delivery. So just so you understand, it's, it's kind of a leap of faith on our part that you're going to adopt the capital improvements program, certainly be incorporated into the budget, and then, you know, the order, the delivery wouldn't take place until after the fiscal year begins on July 1st.
Any comments on that item? Mr. Pastu, you have any additional?
No, Your Honor, if I may, just the authorization to purchase a parking pay station for the city hall lot. It's under the manager's purchasing threshold, but I think, given a lot of the parking changes that have taken place throughout the downtown, we think that, you know, it's still important to have a pay station there for, for turnover. This last month, the clerk treasurer's office, they collected 530 something dollars. And the committee that's involved with it had been DDA coordinator in that Knoll, clerk treasurer, public safety director, myself, and Mr. Lewis. And, you know, we think it's important to keep that out there so that there is an ongoing parking turnover, but also to allow for continuing evaluation of how that's functioning, whether it's to, we may recommend an increase in, in the violation fee that we have, but also monitor the time and the turnover so that we accomplish what we want to, which is really to get quick turnover in that lot. And so, but we think this is a good start and, and just asking for council just authorize going forward with it.
I know that with the clerk's office involved as well, and just all, all parties. And I'm just curious, how do the, how do they, I mean, it's a pay station, it goes direct to, and then from your office? Is it more of the violations?
Um, it's been a little challenging to fully anticipate what it'll look like in the future, and I'm sure Director Tolstad would agree. Until we're able to get it fully integrated with our current system for parking tickets, et cetera, we haven't been able to, to have all the bells and whistles. There will be an app for those parking there. They'll be able to do, instead of having to walk to the machine, they'll just be able to do it on their phone. If they need to add money to it, they'll be able to do it that way. So there will be a convenience factor for those that are parking in that parking lot. The idea is because that's valuable parking space, you know, as, as City Manager Pastu said, we want it to turn over because the idea is they go into the two buildings and do their business. And then there, if they need to be there longer, there's other long-term spaces. So I think there'll be some, some good benefits. The other thing that's really great about this is it's our first foray into this kind of machinery, so to speak. And so if, we've, we've always talked about with the, the parking plan that we have now, we took all the meters out to kind of start over. And then in the future, there may be some places where we want to put something back, maybe not parking meters, maybe this is just, you know, maybe this is an example of what we can do in other parts of the city where it's appropriate. And again, move us into that, move us into the, the present with apps and all of that. So we haven't really had, we've had a couple of complaints, but no more than we normally have with the parking meters that used to be in that parking lot. So it seems that we had just gotten it installed and two or three people went right up to it and, and took care of business. So it's, it's obviously something people are used to from other places.
I appreciate that update. I know that, I, I've received a couple of inquiries, and I think some people are missing the sign when they pull into the parking lot, because we have a sign that's right when you're driving in, but I think they're just being cautious how they're driving in and getting past that, because some will walk by and then they have to go back. Then they're looking for numbers on the spaces, and that's not required. And I try to limit the number of signs that we have to put out for different things, but there may be some space for another location after they park their car to see that. I'm not sure where or how, I leave that to others, but I just think some people are missing it. And we want them to, obviously, utilize it, and we want them to utilize the system. I don't want, rather than getting citations and I didn't know or I didn't see. It, but it is catching on. I see people at the, at the station every day.
There's opportunity for more signage near the station itself. And again, because we weren't sure if it was going to be permanent, there's also some stickers to put on it regarding pay, et cetera. And we just were holding off until we knew whether or not that was our machine or not.
Yep. That sounds great. Any other questions on that one?
I don't have anything else. Those were the items I wanted to go over before the meeting.
Fair. Councilman Germaine, if you had something, then I'll go back.
Thank you. On council action, item number 3895, I think it would be fair for me to abstain from the vote since it's my employment. I know I did before.
Obviously, the council, from a council seat, has to, when somebody wants to abstain from voting, the council has to be agreeable, so. Councilman?
Special meeting, we can make motions, yes?
Make motions for?
Is it prudent to make a motion that Councilwoman Germaine be allowed to abstain from item number 3895? Or do you want to wait till the meeting for that to happen?
Probably when it comes up, because there may be people here that, in the regular meeting, then they'll say, you know, I think, but I think if nothing else, I don't think we need a motion as much as, maybe you do. I don't, or agreement with the council if there's, if anybody disagrees, they would say. I'm good either way.
I would say for purposes of clarity, when we get to that point, it would probably be appropriate for Councilwoman Germaine to give just background on why she's seeking to abstain, to take a quick vote for council if they're agreeable on that, and then to take the vote on the ultimate matter. I think that would be my preference on how we would handle that.
Councilman Lamore, you have something?
Yeah, not, not anything on the agenda here. Just Friday, I was stuck behind the train that was shuttling down Kentucky Avenue there, and all lanes of traffic going from east to west were closed off from Sixth Street all the way up to Noble. But I also had a conversation with Public Safety, or not Public Safety, with our DPS director, Louis, and, and he mentioned to me that the wall is in great, a great problem there as well along Kentucky Avenue. And I had the pleasure of driving by that today and noticing that that wall is encroaching into the street. In other words, it's falling over a little bit, and it is a quite dangerous situation. And I'd just like to somehow get it on record that we have attempted many and numerous times to get a hold of Norfolk Southern to correct that, and, and nothing has happened, even to an attempt to divert that traffic to another track. And they have not really gone with us on that. So I'm not certain what the process is, but I think we should at least send a letter out to our other state leaders, federal leaders, let them know that, that we have a problem here, a potential problem, and it's basically an accident waiting to happen.
So I think the council was looking at a correspondence to be sent. I think we sent a correspondence to the railroad to begin with, so put them on notice, and copying that to our, our, our state legislators or others and congressmen. I, I think that'd be appropriate so that everybody sees the same letter of what we're sending to what the issue may be. And as we craft that, then we can maybe bring it back for council if necessary, or just let management or administration go ahead and send it.
I could put something together with Mr. Lewis and I taking a look at questioning the structural integrity of the wall there that they'd preferably give us some sort of engineer's report that it is safe.
Yeah.
That would be it.
Yeah, sounds good.
I think in the past, and Patrick and I were talking about this before, was that if they come out, they look at it and say, it's great, no problem. They, they really don't care, I don't think personally. But I, I think just for our own good, I think, I'd like to take a step forward and say, hey, you know, we, we want to wash our hands of this because we've tried numerous times to, to correct this, and, and we're falling on deaf ears.
Put some, I'll put something together.
Other items council has either agenda or otherwise for administration?
So if we got a few minutes, we got time for the next item, which is to discuss other items as time permits. And one of the things, I think we got a few minutes to do, is I want to talk about, Mr. Lewis, if you'll come up, he's been working on a presentation, and it'll go quick, you know, just a few minutes, but one of the things we're proposing is to use some of our CDBG money toward some alley paving projects in areas that qualify for that. We were applying some of the funds toward the Father Carnes Park project. We realized that there'd have to be what's called a section 106 review, and it would have delayed the contractor from starting for probably at least a couple of months. And, and they were ready to mobilize and get going. And so, so we pulled the money back, but we do need to spend some or have a plan in place before the end of April. And so one of the things that we've talked about in the past is looking at some of these alley projects and, and again, try to return some of these older neighborhoods back with the alleys, back to their functional purpose. So if you don't mind, I'll have Mr. Lewis kind of go through it fairly quickly and get the council's thoughts on going forward with it.
Thank you, Mr. Pastu. I will go quickly, I promise here. So as we talked about, this is our potential alley paving project, and we just kind of, why this isn't moving. Well, that might be a good start. What's that little on button's for? How many engineers does it take to start a PowerPoint? Answer is more than one, apparently.
Go ahead.
Anyway, so we sat down, the Economic and Community Development Department and I sat down last week and kind of brainstormed some options we have with our alleys. Looked at our eligible census tracts, because that's the first thing, it needs to be in an eligible area. And infrastructure is generally going to be eligible. So we identified six blocks of alleys that we thought would fit neatly within this. This by no means encompasses all alleys that could be done, nor does it encompass all alleys in those census tracts. There are many, many unpaved alleys in those areas as well, but we focused on those that were already paved but are in poor condition. So we've got, there's a couple of maps in here. Here's the first five that are all kind of concentrated in one area, and then I've got another map on the next slide. So one of the reasons we picked the alleys is something to consider is it's fairly easy to advance this to construction within the 2023 construction season. While alleys can be a little complicated design-wise, they're not particularly long, so we think we can get them surveyed and designed, at least to get a contract awarded in 2023, which we think will satisfy HUD. The, so the first five alleys kind of in the downtown area, I'm going to step you through each one of those real quickly here. And then one is, one is next to Town Square Foods off of East Third Street. I know Councilwoman Vining has referred that one to me on a regular basis relative to potholes and things like that, because that is fairly heavily used. So those were the six that we had identified in our street inventory we do every year. We've come up with a number around a half a million dollars. Some of that is some uncertainty about exactly what we need to do with storm drainage on some of these. Many alleys, you can actually just pitch out to the nearest cross street. Sometimes you have to run a storm sewer. We think we can do all these pitched out, but we threw a little bit of extra money in just in case we have to run a few hundred feet of storm sewer. So the six alleys we looked at, this is the, we'll call it location A, we just kind of went through the lettering system. South of West Second, east of Smith, all of these are roughly 300 feet long. We came up with a cost estimate of about 75,000. This was last constructed over 50 years ago, and you can see two pictures of it. It's in pretty poor condition. So that's really just what I'm trying to highlight for you, is these are all in really rough shape. Next location, now this is only partially paved, but it's in, it looks like the whole thing is stone now because the pavement's so bad. This is actually one block to the east, south of West Second, east of Harrison. Again, about a $75,000 cost estimate on this one, and the part that was paved was built in 1966. We have another one. You may recognize this is the alley behind De Rocher's, south of West Second Street, east of Cass. This one's a little more expensive because we have to patch in the parking lot to the east of that and blend that a little bit. We don't know for sure when this was last paved. The original drawings show it 100 years old, but it's clearly not 100-year-old surface. The picture on the left shows the loading dock area there. That's being traversed a lot. Again, poor condition throughout. Next location is the block south of that, continuing that alley south between east of Cass and south of Third now, which kind of outlets on the south end by Tim Hortons. Not quite as bad as a block to the north, but again, we're kind of continuing with the same area. And keep in mind, we have to, we have to pick those that are in census tract areas that are eligible. So when I get to the next one, I'll show you where we had to stop. This is east of, south of Third Street, east of Monroe Street. This one's a little more expensive still because of all the parking lots that we need to blend in here, a number of other things that we have to do to, to make those fit. It, the plan I have in the back shows it was done in 1929. I don't know if it was resurfaced since. Again, quite poor condition. It looks like gravel in the left, left-hand photo, but it actually is supposed to be paved. Now, the reason I say that we have to stop at the census tract is the block to the south of this, between Fourth and Fifth, is actually just as bad shape, but the census tract boundary ends at Fourth. So we can't use CDBG dollars on the next one going south. Again, I could talk to you all night about some other alleys in the city that need to be done, but we had to focus on the CDBG eligible ones. And the last one that we've looked at was the one east of Third, or south of Third, east of Kentucky, so between Kentucky and Winchester, adjacent to the market. And this is one that gets a lot of traffic because of the market on the north end, and it is used for, for cutting through all the way to Fourth Street. So the picture on the right is south of the market. The one on the left is next to the market parking lot. So basically, the wrap-up of this is we kind of wanted to feel out if there was any council objections to looking at this. And if not, we're going to secure the survey, survey work and start design as soon as we can. And we're going to be fitting this into our regular construction process, because we probably won't get the surveys back until early spring. So fortunately, these are fairly short, so I can have someone work on them for a few days when they've got a break in construction, and I'll probably be diving in and helping out too a little bit. But we, we're pretty confident that if we need to, we can get bids, at least bids secured in 2023, and in all likelihood, we could probably get a contractor to do this in the fall. I put a photo up of what one looks like when we get it done, and that's the alley between First and Second, east of Monroe Street. So that's a So that's a fairly recent concrete paving project. And as you can tell, the difference between this and those can be significant. So that's something where we, it's, it's more than just a, a traveling surface, it's a community appearance thing as well. So that's why we think that these would be appropriate projects. So if there's no other questions, that's what, we just wanted to kind of roll that out for you and let you know that that was in the hopper.
Mr. Pastu, anything further or, and I'll see if there's comments?
No, Your Honor, we just wanted to get your council's temperature, whether to proceed with this, but we do need to get a plan in place and a, for spending this money by May 1st.
So I'll ask, and I see there's a couple of comments, but thinking of this, you said the funds that were going to be spent on a project because there, it would cause a time delay for that and that's the reason we want to move forward and is, would that be the same as any other project that we may have?
No, that, this is, this one, we had some CDBG money in because it's within the census tract. But when we understood that we were going to have to do this 106 review, then it was going to slow everything down for a couple of months. Had we done this earlier, we probably wouldn't have come with this, we would have stayed with it, but it, we got kind of late notice that this is something that we needed to do. And rather than hold up the, the construction process, we, we moved some money around with Mr. Sell and, but we still got to burn, I should say burn, we, we need to spend appropriately some of the CDBG money rather than give it back.
But other projects that we have that are planned and qualify for CDBG, do be the same item, they'd still have to do that process?
Yes.
Which could delay those as well?
Yep.
That's what I thought.
Can occur simultaneously with the, us collecting survey data and design work. Starting that, we're starting that process now and so by the time we're ready to construct, that should be. We, we don't anticipate any problems, but the good thing about having a project that has six locations is if we did find a problem on one, we could pull that out and, and say, okay, we're just going to do these five instead if there was any real deal killers.
Councilman Lemoore?
Your Honor, is the alley between, that connects Front and First between Washington and McComb, is that eligible?
Yes, it is. We, we deliberately did not put that in the package because there's, that one will have a couple of, couple of factors, significant, significantly longer design time because there's a lot more things that are underground there and a lot, a lot more things we need to, we need to bring up. The other part is exactly that section's 106 review. One of the things that you start to run into is if, when you've got the really old part of town, is that there could be historic resources that require the presence of an archaeologist, things like that. And so given that time was a factor here, we have more than enough work in other areas that we can, we can do now that we don't anticipate having those problems. That one was deliberately omitted for that reason, but we know it needs to be done and we're still looking at ways to do that in a future year. But that's, that's a very good point and we did, we did spend quite a bit of time talking about whether we could do that. But when, when times of the essence and we have to spend this money fairly quickly, the risk of getting mired in what I would say is a little bit of a, I don't want to say quagmire, but a little bit of a challenge in getting that cleared, we can't really afford that.
One other one maybe directed towards city manager would be the garbage collection for Front Street. I know we want to get that off of the street. Have we put any more thought into that and possibly be able to use some of these funds to do that?
Well, I think that would be also incorporated as to part of the design, you know, you know, certainly Mr. Lewis, Bill Walters, our DPS superintendent, myself walked it probably a couple, about six weeks ago, I think, it wasn't that long, late fall.
Yeah.
We lose track of time.
It was before Christmas.
But we identified a number of locations where it would make sense to put some dumpsters so we can start moving the refuse off the sidewalks for collection. And clearly that alleyway would cover, we think, a good portion of east Front Street between Washington and, and McComb. So we've got a couple of other locations that we're looking at as well in between just the alleyway, although the alleyway itself is in good shape, we also know we've got to do something with that behind where First Merchants Bank is running from First to, from front to First. There's already some dumpsters in there, but they're inadequate for the, the volume in that area as well. So those are the two areas that we think we really probably will need to, to focus on in the future here with that. But both of them are going to incorporate elements of the alley designed to accommodate that. And so I think that's, you know, in part with Mr. Lewis's comment is, along with some of the other complications with it is how do you design it so that, you know, the hauler can come in there and just, you know, relatively easy, you know, dump and go. So I could say it's a confined space, but it's very limited what they can do, so.
Other questions or, Councilman Vining?
Is this something that we plan to continue and can we find funding from other sources to do alleys, like the sidewalk and trails?
Well, I think that, you know, certainly there's, the, the conventional way of doing it most of the time is going to be special assessments. And I think at some point, you know, maybe the city council might want to contemplate that. These are good starts too, though. You can see that sometimes these alleys can transform some of these blocks and start functioning like neighborhoods again. And, and so, but I do think the conventional way to go with it is to have a combination of special assessments as well as other funds, whether it's CDBG, you know, capital projects funding from the city as well. So it'll take a multiple sources to, to get there.
We have a number of alleys that are still unpaved that, and I think I mentioned that in one of the earlier slides, maybe back at the beginning, where a, a future phase of this could be, we look at some of the worst alleys that are unpaved and continue that process. But we've got, I don't have the number right in front of me, but it's more than five miles of alleys that probably should be done ideally, but it's all a function of how many people use them and, and things like that. So I would love, I would love to pave every alley that's in use in town, but it's got to be prioritized as everything else. And I don't believe we can use our streets and trails millage for that.
So I think the other fit, you know, just going back to the, to the CIP and the presentations that I've had in the past, you know, council's been very successful in addressing some of our infrastructure deficiencies, you know, whether it was the St. Mary's Garden project that's currently underway or the Turnus was, road was another biggie that, you know, was addressed. And, and now you've got your municipal street fund that is, you know, already showing, you know, major dividends. The one item where I don't have an answer, and I always presented it in the CIP, was alleys. It really is what I think, you know, from an infrastructure standpoint, one of the things that you'll have to look at in the, in the future. But Patrick has indicated, he's got a, you know, a, an inventory of the alleys and, and so it's just a matter of, you know, trying to put together a long-term plan that, that we could follow.
Councilman? Good? Councilman Felder?
Yeah, two things. Is it going to be our intention moving forward to utilize CDBG funds in this way?
I can't answer that.
At least in part?
From a broad ques, from a broad policy standpoint, I can't answer that. This was, we, we contemplated, because we've had so many large-scale projects going on, we, we've got a lot happening. So we need to come up with a way to basically spend this money in a way that's eligible, that improves the community because we don't want to run afoul of having too much money stockpiled in the CDBG program. It's something that we can easily continue to do in small pieces and I'm going to let Mr. Cochran fill in the rest of that policy call. Like I said before, I'd be happy to work on whatever infrastructure you'd like me to, but Mr. Cochran?
As he speaks.
My friend.
As he speaks, Councilman Felder, I think there, you know, as we haven't had in the past, a list of items that are eligible for those funds and we prioritize those. I think this is an item of what can we do with this time issue probably, but I'll leave that to Mr. Cochran to respond.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilman Mark Cochran, Director of Economic and Community Development. So just for way of background, the urgency to need to spend this, these funds by May 1st. According to HUD guidelines, you're only allowed to keep one and a half times your annual allocation in your reserve at any time. Right now, we've built up a little bit of a stockpile because we haven't spent it all. And so we have a total of about 309,000 that we have to spend by May 1st. We got a letter on Friday from HUD that if we don't spend it by May 1st, we have to submit a plan on how we're going to spend our allocation. Otherwise, if by the end of next year, if we don't have the funds spent and no plan, they're going to start reducing our annual allocation. So obviously, we don't want to reduce our allocation going into the future. And so we've been having some conversations in our department, both external and internal, about how we can deploy these funds for the intended and good use for our community that they're meant to, that they're provided to us to be stewards of. I will say just for some background, Caitlin and I did hold a public meeting, it was probably in between Thanksgiving and Christmas where we invited a whole host of community organizations, nonprofits to come and let them know we have quite a bit of funds that are available to be spent and asked them to submit projects and proposals. And so we did open up an application period. Unfortunately, we didn't get as much interest as we had hoped. We do have some interest and you'll be seeing those contracts and agreements coming before you and, and the coming months, but those are primarily going to be taken out of next year's allocation that we're getting from CDBG. So hence the urgency. And so we reached out to some of our departments and said, do you have any projects or proposals that could be implemented in relatively short order that we could spend these funds and not impact our future allocation? And Director Lewis, of course, had a whole host of ideas that we vetted through and we met last week, starting primarily with the alleys, knowing staff and manpower capacity as well as project capacity in the coming year. And so that's why we're presenting this total project tonight as a concept. To your question, Councilman Felder, on whether we're going to allocate funds like this every year going forward, I think looking at our allocation, looking at our balance going forward, taking the temperature with other agencies and organizations out there who may not be submitting applications and how the city wants to use those for public infrastructure going forward, I think is going to be a very valid conversation, whether that be sidewalks or whether it be the alley that Councilman Lemoore talked about, as well as keeping a portion set aside for organizational or, or community use as well, knowing that we have thresholds that we have to meet through HUD to make sure we're serving 70% low to mod area income residents in census tracts. So I know that's a, a long story, but in short, that's why the urgency and how we put together this project for this year.
So to finish up part one, I get why there's an urgency on the, on, on the expenditure of these funds. We'll have to have a discussion going forward on, on the appetite for council to proceed with this type of programming in the future. I'm, I don't know that I'm opposed to it, I'm, I'm sort of happy moving in this direction. If this is something that works, obviously, we're going to be constrained a little bit by eligible alleys in, in qualified census tracts. But, you know, if there's, if there's a demand there and, and the need for this to happen and there's been a struggle on our part to pay for this through other means, I think that this is a perfectly legitimate utilization of those resources. So that wraps up the first question. The second question, we have had a study, it's a little bit old now, I didn't find it on the website, about utilization of alleys, especially in the downtown, on our western census, on the, our western certified census tracts, because I know that the city has two. I, I, the, the name of the study eludes me at this point in time, but it was talking about transforming alleys into public spaces with, with.
Heart of Monroe?
Spaces and, that, that might be it.
Yep.
That, that might be it.
Yeah.
So do you see, you know, because now your department also oversees Parks and Rec, do you see, you know, the transformation of our public alleyways into, you know, we have a two-foot median sometimes on the sides valleys between the alley and the building for green spaces and other public amenities that, that help the quality of life improvement in the, in the downtown and the city?
Mm-hmm. Yep. And most of the recommendations, going back to the Heart of Monroe, I know the recommendations that were addressed in the Heart of Monroe Plan have been incorporated into other master plans as well, so they haven't completely been lost like when, within the downtown master plan. But I think we can take a look at all of our alleyways and pedestrian walks and connectors into neighborhoods and, and other areas of the downtown on how we improve the aesthetics of them and also how we make them more palatable passageways for pedestrian and non-motorized users. Does that answer your question?
It does. I look forward to seeing your, your proposed projects over time as it relates to that. So, thank you, sir.
I guess I'll follow up to that because the Downtown Development Authority and the County Museum put together a proposal to, from the Heart of Monroe Plans, actually within that area from Front Street out to Third, I think it's Third, Second, it goes to Third but Second, behind the museum and that, that alleyway about some partnership to, with, within the concept, the idea of, of improving the, for the reasons that Councilman said. And it's not just the paving, but it's the seating and the pathway between the RCA and the museum and how you make that connectivity as another walkway. They have cars, parking spaces there. And so they did come up with an original, our first rendering and then they, I looked at it and got another thought about it. So that's, that's still in discussion and while we thought we might start at Front Street, that, that's probably the heavier lift side because of the items under, underground that might need, be, need to be addressed, as Mr. Lewis said, in other areas. But it doesn't matter if we start at the other end and still make the connectivity later. So, but yeah, that's, it, it still lives at that plan and I think that there's funding for it. And I think there's motivation from the DDA to put that on their list as well with the administration of the city.
I think some, if I may, Your Honor, I think some of those projects have come to fruition if council recalls. The city council did approve conveying land to Scallywags in between their building and the former U and I. And they took the initiative, took it upon themselves and their own cost to improve. Well, they are making progress toward improving partly because they wanted to build the dog wash area, but also to improve the landscaping all along the way. The city retained the sidewalk easement. And then I know there's another downtown building owner who also wanted a license to improve the walkway between their buildings just because they own the property and they want it to look nice. And so I think in addition to those public improvements we can make, there's also interest in some of the downtown building owners as well who want to be involved and, and have the means and resources and interest to, to move those projects forward as well.
And that contract with, through the DDA with the, I'll say a person, is to put lighting in the alleyway overhead. So that's just one of the items, string lighting, stuff like that. And plants. Other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Cochran, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Pastu, anything further?
Nothing else, Your Honor.
So we have about eight minutes before our regular meeting, so I think we've had the opportunity, so motion to adjourn, please. Your Honor, do we have to offer public comment first? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, because it is a special meeting, appreciate that. So we have, this is the special meeting that started at six o'clock. We had closed session. I know some of you may have walked in during that timeframe. These are discussion items that we had. We weren't taking motions or actions, but there's always being a, a special meeting and opportunity for a public comment. I appreciate that, Councilman Lemoore. So there's opportunity for public comment, whatever that may be. Mindful the chambers of three minutes. Any comments at this special meeting? And during our regular council meeting, there's also the opportunity with those agenda items to either be pulled by the public for further discussion or comments at the end of the public comment. Again, any public comments up here for the special meeting? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Lemoore, supported by Councilman, Councilman Felder. Kirk, please call the law.
Councilperson Stillgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Whitman?
Mayor Clark?